Welcome to the Monday, February 3rd, Cabarrus County Board of Education and Work Session. We have been in closed sessions, so thank you for your patience as we went through that. So we reconvened in open session. We are gonna move on to Section 4, which is our opening ceremony. I'm gonna do our introductions and greetings, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. So on the dais with me, I have Melanie Freeman, Board Member, Pam Escobar, Board Member, Greg Mills, our Vice Chair, John Kupicki, our Superintendent, Sam Treadaway, Board Member, Catherine Moore, Board Member, and Caleb Snell, our Teacher of the Year. We also have a, unfortunately, had another student that had passed away, so I would like to do a moment of silence before we get started here for Kayden Casanova, a student at Hickory Ridge High School. And if you'd join me for a moment of silence, please. Okay, our thoughts and prayers are with their family. So next, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna move on to our next item, which is the recent Board Member Appointment. And we had number here, 5.01, which is clarification of the clarification. I'm, I guess, acknowledging that we've gotten some feedback from our, from the public, and we've reviewed what our process was and what we went through, and I'm gonna ask our Board Attorney to give us a clarification.
Thank you. So the Chair has asked me to provide some clarification regarding the procedures that were followed and the vote that was taken at the January 13th Business Meeting to fill the open seat on this Board. First off, I would like to acknowledge that there have been members of the public who have expressed concern with how that vote occurred. After a thorough review of the concerns listed, we would like to clarify some misunderstandings. One, there was never a quorum of Board Members that met during the recess, though a few of the Board Members did talk with one another during that time. The recess was by consensus of the Board, as has become the custom of this Board. At the time of the recess, there were no objections by the Board Members. However, going forward, the Board has committed to taking formal votes for recesses. After the initial headcount vote, there was a separate formal vote consisting of a proper motion, a second, and a four-to-two vote to appoint Mrs. Lancaster to fill the open seat. This was all done in accordance with the process previously approved by this Board. The Board, however, has taken this constructive criticism to heart. To that end, the Chair has requested that the Board Attorneys schedule a training session for the full Board to cover these topics and review applicable policies, including but not limited to Policy 2000, which is operational goals of the Board, Policy 2110, which is Board Member Elections, and Policy 2120, which is Code of Ethics for Board Members. This training session has been tentatively scheduled for Monday, March 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenhower.
You're welcome.
Yes. Uh, Pam?
So thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to say thank you to the members of the public who are watching and who are concerned and who are sharing those concerns with us. There were many people who signed that petition. I know that everyone on this Board has read that petition and that we do take it seriously when people reach out to us. And so I had asked for that clarification to be on the agenda today. It is typical for work sessions not to have public comment, so that is not unusual. I wish we had an opportunity for the public to come forward, for them to say their concerns. So they did through that petition, which is public, and so again, I just want to thank them for their interest in, in school board and what we're doing and, and to continue following us and showing your interest and reaching out. It does not fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escobar. Anybody else? Okay, well, with that, we will move on to our swearing-in ceremony. We have Judge Marty McGee here, and he will do the honors of swearing in our new Board Member.
First, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to be here today. Thank you very much. And Ms. Lancaster, if you're ready to throw a quick pledge of left hand on the Bible and raise your right. And do you, Shannon Lancaster, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Cabarrus County Board of Education, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Okay, there was a request since we've took a little longer than we should have on our closed session. Our photographer's here waiting to take a updated Board photo, so I would need a re- a motion for a recess for about five minutes to take the pictures. Okay, Mr. Treadaway, second by Catherine Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we are in a five-minute recess for our first. All right. Shannon, you can come up here with us. We've got a, got a nameplate already, already put on, put in over there. So the first order of business for all new Board Members is to sign a Code of Ethics, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Eisenhower to go through that process.
Sure. So now that you've been sworn in, the next step per Board Policy 2120 is for you to sign the Code of Ethics. All six of the current Board Members have already signed this. This is an important document and an important part of being on this Board. It does say that you swear and will uphold the Code of Ethics of the Cabarrus County Board of Education to the best of your knowledge and ability. It then goes on to say what the performance of these duties are, and then also talks about what standards are to be maintained. So I will ask you to sign this. I'll bring it over now.
Vice chairs of, there's eleven districts in the Charlotte area. So from Lincoln, Cabarrus, Cleveland, Rowan, Salisbury, Stanley, Union, Urdale, Statesville are some of those that will be part of this meeting. And then secondly, we had our planning meeting on Saturday. We got the transportation update. The Transportation Department has started a committee. Well, they call it Advisory Council. It has representation for all the different areas in the Transportation Department. And they have invited us to have a liaison to attend those meetings. And Ms. Escobar expressed some interest in that. And so I'm naming her as our liaison to the Transportation Advisory Council. So that is the update on the current committee assignments. We have had some interest and discussion about maybe adding some other ones. But we're not going to make that decision today. But I'd like you board members to keep that in mind and get with me over the next couple of weeks to see if there are some other committees that we could have or liaisons for other organizations that would be helpful for Cabarrus County Schools. So I guess with that, we'll move on to our next one, which is Board Committee Updates. So we have our two committees that we created last month, one of which is under a little bit of a time constraint. So we have the Legislative Agenda Committee. We've got Greg Mills as the Chair of that committee. And if you could kind of give us an update of what's going on with that?
Sure. We are moving pretty quickly because the legislature is already in the first long session of this biennium. And so we wanted to get our legislative agenda in front of them fairly quickly. So to that end, we have polled the board and asked them to send us sort of their legislative priorities. We've looked through the legislative agendas that this board has done in the past. I've had a meeting with Ms. Melanie because she's the other member of this committee. And I've had a meeting with Kupicki and his staff to sort of review the feedback that we've gotten so far. This is an ongoing process. It isn't settled yet. Still got another board member that I need to speak to to get some more feedback. We do hope to get this set in the next week or two because again, we want to get that in hands of our legislators fairly quickly. Based off the conversations that we've already had, Dustin Schu was very gracious to sort of consolidate that information. And he has organized some of this stuff under five priorities. And so I'll just read you those priorities as they stand right now. First one's strengthening education funding. Second one, recruiting and retaining quality teachers. Third is reforming the school accountability model. And fourth is increasing flexibility and regulatory reform. So those are kind of the main areas as they sit right now. This may change. I do hope that one of the things that we'll do differently is instead of this being sort of a few-week-long process at the beginning of the year, that we will meet regularly over the course of the year. And we'll maintain our conversation with our legislators and make adjustments to it as necessary. And hopefully, we'll have some opportunities to allow the public to provide some more input and get some inputs from our teachers and staff.
Thank you, Greg. There was some updated information that we got about when our legislators had to submit bills. And that was this month. Is that correct?
Right. So I think the local bills, I don't know the exact date, but I think the local bills have to be submitted to staff so that they can sort of vet them the end of February in the House and the beginning of March in the Senate. So we are in a very tight timeframe. That's why we're trying to move very quickly here.
So, and then we have, I guess Dr. Kupicki's worked with our legislators to talk about a potential change in the actual meeting. We were going to meet with everybody in March, but now with everything kind of moved up, we're looking to see if we can do that in February?
Yeah, that's correct. March 17th is the original Legislative Agenda Meeting. But based on our discussions with some of our administrators and Mr. Mills, we were encouraged to kind of move that timeline up so that we can meet with our legislators while they're in session and prior to writing the bills and submitting them for review. So the suggested date would be to hold a Legislative Agenda Meeting on February 17th. We have confirmed with our three state representatives that they would be able to make that meeting on February 17th. We will also extend that invitation obviously to our state senators and to our local county commissioners as well. But I think that date would be the best day to accommodate the schedule and to make sure that we have some time with our legislators early.
Board members, does that date work for you all? Potentially, yes? Okay, then next item, a question is for Mr. Eisenhower. So how do we add that meeting to our agenda? Or our calendar, on calendar?
Yeah. I can work with Lori to properly notice that meeting.
So we just need to notice the meeting? We don't have to take any action for that?
Yeah, that's right. We'll also update our calendar as well. If you'd like to go ahead and do a motion and a second vote, just to be proper, I think that'd be a good call.
We have to amend our agenda to add an action item? Yes, probably.
Right. We can also take action at the next meeting.
Okay, well, let's do that then. All right, anything else on committees?
We're penciling in 217 for that, right?
We are. And yeah, and that was the other update. If you had Catherine and Sam, did you have any update on our legal affairs groups? Did you need anybody else to be added to your committee? Are you?
I will work on that.
Okay. Anything else on committees?
Just one quick question on the Legislative Agenda, just what the expectations are for next week. Do we, Mr. Mills, would we like to finalize this list for the board to vote on next week?
I think that would be ideal. But again, I've got, I need to get some more input from a couple of board members and then hopefully, we'll be able to finalize that for next week. I would say that's the goal.
Okay. So you and I can discuss that this week and arrange that maybe we'll get it for next week or not, but at least have a rough draft of a better synopsis of where we're going?
Sure. I'd like to get a rough draft in front of this board so they can have some feedback before we bring it to the meeting. But again, I think that can be done.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And last time, we actually did take action at the meeting prior to starting. Excellent. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to our next section, which is Reports Section. So we've got a couple of reports tonight. We have 10.01, preserving or preventing food waste in the school nutrition program. And we have Ms. Stephanie Allman with us? We do.
Yeah, just for some context, Mr. Walter, Ms. Freeman had asked about this question at a previous board meeting. So I did assure her that we would bring a report back to her. So this is in response to that inquiry. And Ms. Allman is here to inform not just you, Ms. Freeman, on your question, but also the board as well. So I just want to make sure that we are answering those questions for you. So Ms. Allman, will you make that presentation, please?
The remote? Do I press this? Sorry, this is a new setup. It buzzed. Is that a good thing? Never mind. I can just look up there. It's a short presentation. It's fine. Good evening, board. Welcome to the new board members. Look forward to working with you all. Can you hear it? Yeah? Move a little closer? Better? Okay. So as Dr. Kupicki said, this is in response to just a quick question that was had last month at the board meeting about what does school nutrition do in terms of reducing food waste? And so I just have a little short presentation. This is generally an overview. If you want anything more in-depth, I'm always willing to talk with you, give you any of the information that you need. But this is just a general idea. So let's see. This is my clicker. Will this work on that? Oh, never mind. He's doing it for me. You can go to the next slide then. So we are very proactive as opposed to reactive when it comes to food waste. We have a number of things that we can do to try to eliminate the, well, reduce. I hate to say eliminate. That's a big promise to make. But we start with planning menus that are acceptable to the majority of students. So we want to be sure we buy things that they are going to eat and enjoy with keeping in mind that we have to meet USDA meal patterns, both for serving sizes and for nutritional content. So we try to meet the needs and desires of our customers. We make reasonable estimates, not only what we're going to purchase for the year, but also managers make estimates in their planning. They plan about two weeks out. They make estimates in their planning of how much they think a certain food item will be served. And then they place their orders accordingly. Using the historical data helps them make more accurate predictions. So more accurate predictions means less food left over or less food thrown away. Proper inventory control, making sure that food in the freezer or the cooler or in the stockroom is not going out of date because we neglected to use it. So we have things like manager choice days and so on to make sure we're utilizing that inventory so that we're not tossing anything just because it's past the date. And then one last thing that we can do is obtaining lunch counts. That's pretty common in elementary schools. Field trip information is always important. You don't want to throw away things because you didn't know the fifth grade was going to be gone, things like that. Go ahead. Proper preparation and service is the second step that we take. Utilize batch cooking when possible. What batch cooking is, instead of making 25 pans of pizza at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock when all the kids come in, we take a look, how much are we using during each lunch period? And then we plan accordingly so that we don't have a lot left over. Now, that obviously works better for things like that that just take a few minutes to cook. You can't put in a pan of spaghetti and do that. So there are situations where we can't do that. But we train our managers so they do that as much as possible. Also results in a much more, much higher quality pleasant food to eat because it's made fresher for each lunch. Maintaining accurate records, like I was talking about a second ago, to predict more accurately what we're going to use the next time. So every time we serve an item, we go on a three-week cycle. So every time we serve an item, we look at what it was compared to and so on and try to get as close as possible. It's always an educated guess. You could be wildly off sometime just because things you didn't know about. Or sometimes it's just a whim. People get tired of certain things and you just, you were off that time. But for the most part, it works pretty well. Then USDA has, oh, let me just say one little thing for those of y'all that are new board members that may or may not be familiar with this. All of the meals that we serve are through USDA federal meal programs. So the National School Lunch Program, School Breakfast Program, After-School Snack Program, and Summer Food Service Program. Those are all operated through the USDA. And then the DPI serves as a state agency that administers it through the local district. So we have to follow all of their regulations. That's why I said this is just an overview because sometimes it can get really detailed. So offer versus serve is something that USDA developed. It's been a long time. I've been in school nutrition almost 15 years and it was already set before I ever started. So at lunchtime, for example, there are five components, meat or protein, which is usually combined with a grain. So say if it was something like spaghetti that would have the meat and the grain in the same thing, a fruit, a vegetable, and fluid milk. So those five components, the students can decline two of those, but they cannot decline a fruit or vegetable. They must take a fruit or vegetable on their tray. And that came into play in the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. So we started seeing that around 2012 in the schools. So they can decline, it's a myth that they have to take a milk, they don't have to take an entree, they just have to have at least a fruit or vegetable and then two other components. Similar breakfast with different items, though. That allows them to take, to have a little bit of flexibility so they're not having to take, you know, a little kindergartner may not eat all five components. So it gives them a little bit of flexibility so they can decline a couple of things, things that they don't want, they know they're never going to eat. Okay, go ahead. Discarding the least amount possible. As you can see, the first two were really proactive. These are coming more into the reactive part where we don't have as much control in. But we still make an effort to control this a little bit. So we serve leftovers whenever, one, they're allowed. We have 72 hours from the time that we take something off the line. But some things don't reheat very well. They don't look very appetizing or taste good. The quality declines. So not everything is a candidate for leftovers. So that's when it's critical to really try to get your numbers right. But you'd be surprised leftovers are super popular. On the second day, they rarely last beyond the first couple of lunches. So sometimes we even have to spread it out, who gets the leftovers if it's a really popular item. We do utilize farmer partnerships when available. We don't currently have anything, but they are available upon request. Typically, it's hog farmers, but I have heard of other animal farmers taking advantage of it, using kitchen scraps. So not really something that would come off the child's tray, like you wouldn't want to, you're not going to donate spaghetti or something like that with, complete with all the trash. It would typically be more like kitchen scraps if we had peelings or leftover cucumbers or things like that. We do discourage overpreparation by not allowing food to be taken home by employees. That has typically not been a problem, but that is something that's been in place for many, many years. It's a very common loss prevention tool in any type of food service establishment. So that is one of our rules. Now, we do, just so you all know, school nutrition employees do receive one meal per day at no cost. It's the same meal that's available to the students. It can't be any sort of specialty-type meal. Whatever's on the menu for the students that day, they are allowed to take that. And they could take breakfast or they could take lunch, depending on which they prefer. But that is available to each employee at no cost per day. We do also discourage students from taking more than they'll eat. But we don't allow share tables. So share tables work very well in certain circumstances. In my experience, and I have been doing it for quite some time, I have, I have found it to be a challenge to work very well because there has to be a person that monitors, that an adult must monitor. It can only be either shelf-stable items or things like a pre-wrapped fruit or a fruit that you wouldn't eat the peel from, like an orange or a banana or something like that. Most shelf-stable foods are going to be à la carte snacks, say maybe a bag of chips or something, which that doesn't really make a lot of sense that someone would purchase that and then donate it. I suppose there could be, but it's just not a logical thing. So more often, what we have found in our experience, because we have tried in the past, whenever somebody approaches and requests that we try to, we try to work with it. Almost always, we find things that are either out of temperature, someone doesn't want the sandwich that they brought from home and ends up in there, someone discards like an actual meal in there. Maybe there was an adult watching it, but turned their back for a second and someone's whole lunch goes in there. So it becomes very challenging to maintain safety and sanitation. So we typically do not do share tables in the schools. We also work to ensure schools allow enough time for students to consume meals. Now USDA does mandate from the time the student is through the line, that at lunch, they have at least 20 minutes. At breakfast, they have at least 15 minutes. I'm sure you can see how getting through the line and all of that, that can be a challenge. And so principals and cafeteria managers typically work together to see how much time they have within the resources they have to come up with an appropriate amount of time. And you really do just want, you want a good amount of time that allows all the children to get through the line, eat, not have to throw anything away because they didn't have time for it, while I'm sure maintaining proper control in the cafeteria as well. And one of the things that has been popular, I shouldn't say popular, but been encouraged by groups such as Alliance for a Healthier Generation or some of those groups that are really working towards healthier schools, is scheduling recess so that it falls, sorry, scheduling lunch after recess, I said it backwards, in elementary schools because they were finding that kids were hurrying to get outside, so they were tossing half of their food. And that has been shown to be moderately successful. So it's always something worth trying if a principal was able to do that. But I know they have their own constraints with what is scheduled when. It's not as easy as just saying it's a good idea. I think that might be, that's all of it. I told you it was an overview. I'll be glad to answer some questions. If you have more in-depth things, you're always welcome to reach out to me. I'll be glad to help.
Thank you, Ms. Allman. Do we have any questions? We're going to start with Sam.
First of all, thank you for everything you do. It's a miracle to see how few people feed so many kids each day. It's still a miracle.
It is.
And thanks to you and your managers, I think the relationship, I've seen over the years, under your leadership, that relationship between the principals and the managers is so much better of working together. Yes. It wasn't always that good in the past. Used to, when we would visit a school or walk into a school, and if you saw them with paper products or styrofoam, it meant they were probably understaffed and they needed to pull the dishwasher, you know?
Yes.
Is that still the case? Or is, tell me how we're...
I have found that districts, not just, not just our district, but districts, it tends to be a bit of a pendulum. From time to time, it'll swing where everyone is using reusable trays and sometimes even reusable utensils. And then it goes to all paper. And I think some of it depends on the resources in a particular district. More often than not, in my experience, it's been led mostly by how much labor can you get? If you have labor, it's, it's not a bad idea to use reusable. But we have found that we can rarely keep a kitchen staff continuously to be able to allow that. So unfortunately, it becomes more of a luxury. And so we end up using that. So we do our best to procure the best, most responsible paper products available. Great question.
Karen? Shannon? Caleb? Melanie?
Thank you so much. I appreciate all this. So how do you measure waste?
Every so often, districts do a food waste study. Typically, USDA will do one that is more in-depth. In fact, in, we just rescheduled, I don't remember exactly the week, but it's coming up in the next couple of months. USDA is selecting at random a number of districts across the country to do a, just a cross-section of what are districts dealing with in terms of school meal programs? And that is one of the things that they'll be looking at. They're coming to our school, they'll be observing students, what goes in the trash, what doesn't go, and they'll be giving us a report on those just to see what we can find. The biggest complaint is probably the fruit or vegetable. And there's, there's not really been any movement at the federal level on changing that requirement that I've seen over the past decade. So I think that that's probably here to stay. But I would say that that's probably the majority of what we see.
Well, and that was my observation in the trash can at the lunches. There are these huge bananas that are beautiful. I would love to have taken them home, but I'm not going to go through the garbage.
Right.
But still, there was an awful lot of the same things. And you're saying they're not going to be able to refuse that. To me, that just pushes the waste if they're not going to eat it. And I understand you're under USDA.
I understand. I get it.
One other question that came up this past summer, with our changing of demographics in the county, one lady had asked, she said, are there vegetarian protein-type? Because her children had all been vegetarian and they came to school one day without a lunch and there was no choices for them. So I didn't know if that was on our agenda for anything.
We do. We have, pretty much anyone can create a vegetarian meal, even if there's not one specifically menued and marketed as vegetarian. Typically, they can create one because there's almost always a yogurt available, very commonly at the elementary schools. We get that question from time to time. And we do prepare some vegetarian menus upon, when I say upon request, I don't mean student by student. I mean, sometimes, like you said, certain areas of the county will prefer that, would like it. And so we try to add to our menu whenever we can. And then, of course, there's, the final decision on keeping certain things is based on how much do students take it? You know, because you want to be sure that anything you bring in that was not necessarily made there would not go to waste. So most of those things are made in-house. They might be like a salad or things like that. So yes, that's always on the forefront, those type of things, paying attention to the, not just now, the changing demographics, but just over time, what do kids eat? Because it has changed. Even in the years that I've been in school nutrition, what kids will want, and one part of the county will want something dramatically different. Sometimes it's even just as different, like red slaw or white slaw, something very small like that. But you'll be surprised what you might see that different schools prefer over other schools.
So you canvass the parents? Do they get any feedback to that?
We mostly go by what is being observed to be sold. We use our sales records and our production records to see what students are taking and base a lot of menus on those. And then from time to time, there are surveys, there's always been the year-end surveys where the parents and the, I believe, and the students are surveyed as well. And we've had focus groups before where we ask, what would you like to see? And then, of course, you know, a lot of that goes through what is feasible to be able to put on the menu and try to base our menu on that within the confines of the USDA meal patterns.
Is there any way to change the USDA things? I mean, those are trends, right?
That is established by Congress. Well, they're based on, they're originally, initially, they are based on the Dietary Guidelines for Americans, which come out every five years. They, after they go through that initial, I suppose, vetting to be sure that they're in line with that, then team members at USDA work on those. Now, they don't really change from year to year. It really, it actually has to go before Congress in order for it to change. So they're updating them more than they're doing any kind of big revamp. We haven't had a big revamp since 2010 that I referred to earlier. But there are smaller things that are always on the table. Right now, sodium is a hot topic. It has been since 2010 about where it's going to end, where the sodium requirements are. They just reintroduced a new limit on sugar at breakfast, things like that, that not only do operators such as school nutrition programs, but also manufacturers, like someone making cereal and so on, have to pay attention to. And then when all the moves, then we can implement those as long as it continues to be supported by Congress and not changed by law.
Okay, I just have one more.
Sure, no problem.
How close is breakfast to lunch? Are some of these kids, is the turnaround, or is that spaced so that they will be hungry between breakfast and lunch?
So that depends on a lot of variables, but each school is different. The, schools cannot serve breakfast before 10:00 AM unless they request a, I said, did I say breakfast? I meant to say lunch. They cannot serve lunch before 10:00 AM unless there are some special circumstances. And there can be. Sometimes your school might be so small that in order to get everyone through, you have to start earlier. And then you have to worry about getting staff out on time under the eight-hour limit or so, those kind of things. But typically, breakfast is the 15 to 30 minutes before school starts. And then lunch starts, since we have staggered entry, it's really just depends on what, what school you're at. If that makes sense. But they're usually almost always finished by, say, 12, 12:30, if that helps.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Pam?
I'm good.
Greg?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next item, which is 10.2. It's our monthly budget summary and board report. Mr. Philip Penn, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Kupicki. Good to be with you again. There's a fair amount of information to go through in this monthly update, so I'll just ask you to bear with me as we go through it. I'll go slow. You know, and I guess as a preface to this, I would say to you that these kind of challenges aren't unusual. What is unusual is the sheer number of them that we're dealing with this year and that they're all negative. We really have not identified a whole lot of positive variance so far in this year that would normally be an offset to some of this, save some of the vacancies that we've been tracking all year. But I'll go point by point with this. I'll start with the SROs, with the revenues and the SROs, as we've talked about in previous meetings. The SRO grant that we were awarded this year declined by about $200,000 compared to what we were awarded for the 23-24 year, largely because of the competitive nature of that grant. And in effect, we're subsidizing the cost of our SROs with local funds to the tune of about $500,000 this year, right? And no one's advocating for a change in the way that we do our SRO coverage, but we do need to find a way to see more of a sustainable way of paying for these resources going forward, right? So that's sort of the first one on revenue. You've heard me talk, for those who've been around for a bit, about Medicaid payments that are due to us from the state, right? We provide Medicaid-related services to a number of our students. The state then reimburses us for those activities. The state then reimburses us for those activities through a pass-through for the federal government. Medicaid is obviously a federal program. This one in particular is going to be a shortfall, we think, of about $500,000 if we don't receive any of the quarterly payments that are owed to us from the 23-24 year, or the annual payment, usually pay out 90% in the following year, which is frustrating, because what we've been told is that this is a lack of auditing resources at the state level, something we clearly don't control, right? But at the end of the day, we're impacted by that, because we don't have the funds available to us. As I go along through the commentary tonight, I'll try to embed some of the questions that got asked via email by the board members. What I will tell you is, do we expect to receive those funds? The answer is yes. I just can't control the timing. So under our auditing practices and the way that we do our reporting, if that Medicaid money is received by July 30th, I can include it in this fiscal year. If it's after July 30th, I lose the ability to put it into this year, it'll get reflected in next year. That's unfortunately a way we do government accounting. So that's one of the limitations. And unfortunately, like I said, this has been sort of an on and off issue with, with the state on Medicaid payments. If you were to go back about a year from now and look back in historical record, I was discussing the same topic, right? So they still have not gotten their, their rhythm together on how to do those. This next one is kind of interesting in the sense that, you know, I feel this is a change in the legislative process that really hurt us. You've heard me talk about the funding in a rear model that the state has moved to, where they are basically setting our base level of funding based on the better of month one or month two ADM, average yearly membership, out of the last year. For those of you that are new, ADM is not enrollment, right? And the best way to conceptualize this, and I'll thank two of my peers for this, for this explanation, is if you started the month at zero, and you ended the month with enrollment at 200, pretty good chance your ADM is 100. So you're compensated or allotted based on the state, based on the 100. But in reality, you're paying for the services to support the 200. So I've got a problem with the way this model is being done right now, personally, right? Because now, what we're also finding is that the state is telling us that that, the extent of what we've received now, that one point, almost $2 million, will be the full extent of what we received for this year. Based on what I saw, I think that number needs to be closer to 2 million, would be more equitable in terms of that. And there's actually, and I'm working with Mr. Carl Sain on this, there's actually a discrepancy right now between what the state funded us on for ADM and our own internal numbers that we gave to the state for ADM. So we need to resolve that. If that resolves, that's worth almost $500,000, right? So we're trying to move fairly quickly on that. So year-to-date, we've received about $557,000 in fines and forfeiture funds from the county versus a full-year budget of 2.2 million. And that budget guidance came directly from the county's financial staff. That's how we built that. That's not our own internal estimate, we use theirs. Now, what I will tell you is, there's state law that governs how counties and other municipalities are supposed to remit over anything they charge for a fine, anything they have, that's an asset forfeiture, either a criminal matter or a civil matter, to the local school districts. And it's split, based on who has operations of a school district within that municipality or within that county. So they do it, again, use the phrase ADM, on an ADM basis. Whatever the county comes in, comes in with, gets split up between us, KCS, Kannapal City Schools, and so forth, right? Now, I can't tell you if there's any kind of rhyme or reason as to why their fines or forfeitures are falling behind comparably to last year. As I noted in the memo, we collected over $1.7 million last year in fines and forfeitures. We're having ongoing conversations with the county. This will be next on the agenda to have a conversation about with, and see if they're seeing anything different in terms of what's transpiring within that, right? But we are considerably lagging from where I thought we would be, certainly at this point in the year. Now, does that mean it's going to stay at 557,000 for the year? No, it's not. Clearly, we get something remitted to us each month, so I do expect that number to grow, but I am concerned, given the fact that we had guidance to increase the number versus what we had in there last year. Onto expenses. So we continue to track legal expenses. That's not a new item, that you've heard from me say before. I think we're going to land about $200,000 over budget, although I'll say that the $45,000 that we spent in the month of December was the lowest monthly total we've had so far. There is a question about whether or not there's some seasonality to that. I don't think that there is. I think it just all is based on the level of legal activity that we have as a district in any given month determines that. So there really isn't a whole lot of seasonality that I see to those figures, looking back over time. EC, exceptional children-related expenditures, are about $3.3 million over budget. A big part of that is due to increased need, and another big part of that is, of course, we've had to have contracted services to cover internal vacancies. So for those of you that are unfamiliar with how EC works, and I'm paraphrasing this, Dr. Roth is clearly the expert on this, we have an individualized education plan for each of those students. Those plans lay out what services we're required to provide to that student. To the extent we don't have internal resources to cover those services that we're supposed to provide, we may have to hire out to other agencies to provide them. However, what we're finding is, we are not able to retain some of those resources, and those resources are actually jumping ship from us to go get, make more money, going to those contracted resources. So now, we're actually paying for the same services, but at a much higher rate than what we could if we could hire the staff internally, right? Those contracts probably total about $1 million this year. The other part of it is increased need. So what I would tell you is, just in the last 13 months, we've identified 223 more students than where we were 13 months ago that are EC, receiving EC services. And on average, the number of students that we have receive $8,700 worth of EC-related services. So, you know, we receive some level of funding from the state, but it's capped. So if you don't know how the caps work, regardless of how much the student costs, the state reimbursement is capped at $5,300 a student, right? In addition to that, if you go over 13% of your student population is identified as EC, they give you nothing for that, for the part that's above the 13%. We're sitting just under that 13% right now, right? So to the extent you go over 13%, you receive zero for each incremental EC student beyond that 13% level. There is also federal money that ties into that, you've heard of it, called IDEA, the IDEA grant. But when we look at what we're receiving in terms of federal funding and state funding, there's an inherent subsidy from local that has to go into providing these services to EC students, which we're legally required to do. And that subsidy sits at about $2,000 per student, right? So as the needs grow, and the funding from state and federal are not growing fast enough to make up that difference, or the funding model itself has these flaws in it, we get caught in the middle, right? Because now, we have to provide those services legally, and as some of you know, if we don't, we risk litigation as a result of that. Cost of implementation, the classified salary study, came in about $3.6 million higher than we expected. Now, what I will tell you is, we did have an outside agency work on some of this work for us, where they mostly identified what comparable salaries would be, both in private industry and other school districts for those similar roles. They came back with us with a recommended salary level and placement on new scales as a result of the 1,900 or so classified employees that we had out there that were affected by this. However, when we went to go do implementation, what we started to find was, there was inequity in some of the work that we got done by that outside agency, meaning that seemingly comparable roles were placed differently on the salary schedules. In addition, as we continued to peel back the layers of what's transpired over time here, we found a lot of inequity around people being compensated and placed on a scale based on their prior work experience. It was not consistent, and therefore inequitable. And as we continued to go through the work, we faced a number of different choices. And I would say we probably went through six or seven different phases of this work, right? Well, the first option was to do nothing, which clearly would just kick the can down the road, right? The second option was, we take the $2.6 million that we knew we had in available funding, we somehow prorate it against all the different employees, but that seemed messy and inequitable as well, and then resolve the underlying problem. The third option was the one we landed on, was take the information that we have, fix all of it, and pay people what they actually deserve to earn at this point, based on what the new model looks like and based on the new scale, salary scales. That's where we landed. Now, in any given year, what I would tell you is that $3.6 million would have been absorbable due to vacancies and other things going on in the district. It just happens to be that we fixed this at the same time in the confluence of all these other factors that I'm outlining for you today. Do I feel it was the ethical thing to do? Yeah, I do, right? And I'll stand by that. Because I don't think you should continue to perpetuate a problem that you know of without fixing it. Lastly, we were initially allotted teaching positions based on an estimated growth of around 600 students year over year. Now, I think the timing of this is important, right? When we go through the allotment process over our budget, we do that in earnest during the month of March, where we sit down with every principal, we look at their needs of that school, and we allot positions based on what we think we're going to have available to us in the terms of state funding. So we do that in March. Obviously, we don't have kid count until the month of October, right? So we're out there six or seven months in advance of that, trying to predict what ADM allotments are going to look like and what our actual needs are going to be. Now, some of you may think, well, why don't you just wait until you know? Well, if you do that, you miss the entire hiring season for teachers, right? Which means you can't post the positions and get the teachers that you need to fill those vacancies. So one of the things that we're going to do going forward into the next season, and Dr. Williams and I have had a number of conversations, along with the superintendent, is doing a holdback on positions based on what we know. Now, the one good thing about going into this funding in arrears is that we're using the prior year number now, right? So we have this sort of this embedded conservatism that's baked into that. But you'll also see that what we have in here talks about making sure that we reserve positions back to fund Cabarrus Virtual Academy, right? So that if we have a need because a high school or other school needs to place students into there for a short duration, that we've set aside allotments to pay for those short-term teaching assignments. We've talked about the need for making sure we set aside enough to pay for the international faculty that we have and the fees that we incur with those. We have about 102 teachers, I believe, this year from international. Well, we had a straightaway 35 teaching positions to pay for that, right? For the fees that the outside agency uses. We want to make sure when it comes to Title I, there's one school that we do what's called a Title I offset. They're not actually in our Title I calculation, because if they were, they consume 50% of the grant. So what we do instead is we create an allotment process where we give that one school a certain number of positions to make up the difference. Title I allows you to do that. But as I think about the evolution of this model going forward, and well, coming up in the, in the next cycle, we need to be a lot more aggressive in terms of how we restrict the number of allotments that we're doing at the school level going forward to make sure we're covered on this kind of stuff going forward. I'll take responsibility for that one, right? In terms of budgeting this. Because when we look at the number of allotments that we had, we should have said, okay, we're holding back on this. Now, if you remember, at the very beginning of the school year, we knew that the allotted positions were about 20 short of what we thought we were going to be working with initially. And you'll remember the conversations that Dr. Williams and I had with you about making those changes early on in the school year, as opposed to last year where they happened later on and became much more disruptive. But even within that, out of the 15 or 16 that we decided to pursue, I think we had success in maybe moving seven or eight positions. Because at the end of the day, what you don't want to do, as you're in, sitting in month two, is take away a teaching position, then in month three needing to put it back. So there's an embedded level of conservatism around that, too. So I would say that that is an evolving model for us as we go forward, and I'll be happy to take any questions you have and anything I just relayed, and I know Dr. Williams, when it comes to the allotment process, can speak to that as well.
Dr. Kavicki, do you want to add anything?
No.
Pam?
Thank you. Question. With the allotments, I recognize it's just sort of an art, and I also know that you guys are being as creative as possible. But as far as the international teachers, just culturally, it's just difficult to, like, figure out a month later that you need a teacher that you didn't get. Just getting them, getting them moved in, getting them ready to go, all that kind of stuff. So I would just say, I would think with the program choice right now and the decisions being made, that that, that wouldn't leave you in a lurch, but I just, there's the finances and the money, and I understand that, but there's also like the human, like, interactions with getting a teacher who is unfamiliar with our culture up and ready to go to actually teach American students. So I just would caution that, and then, can you?
Can you clarify that for me? What the caution is specifically?
I'm just saying that, like, when you're being conservative about allotments, like, in theory, you know how many Spanish teachers or Mandarin teachers that you need to, to fill those spaces, because those kids have already been assigned. I also recognize that program choice is different than the regular ADM, and you got, there's creative math going along with all of that, but I'm just saying, like, I would rather err on the caution of having enough of those teachers, because the adjustment isn't as easy to make.
Pam, Dr. Kavicki, wants to add to that?
I think they're good points. One thing that Mr. Penn didn't say, but he and I have had a lot of conversations around some of these issues, the allotment process is obviously one of the big pieces of the pie that causes some, some difficulty. But to be blunt, you have a financial problem you cannot sustain moving forward. We can't keep offering everything and giving everything, everything to everybody. We had a long conversation today about the NCVPS situation, the courses that we're offering. We didn't audit the courses. We have our own CVS model that we believe is a very good model, it's getting stronger and better under the leadership of Mrs. Rattan, that we think we can take better advantage of to solve some of these problems. When I look at the master's schedules and I see some of the sizes of the courses that are being offered to kids, it's not a sustainable model, it's just very blunt, and these are the, and program choice is the other big animal in the room, that while we want to make sure that we're offering great choices for kids, you've heard me say this before, it's like going to a restaurant and someone gives you the dessert menu, you can't have everything. You have to pick the things that are, you know, you're, well, that's probably not a great analogy, your favorite, what you like the best, but you want to, you just can't have everything. And I think these are some of the choices. We've talked about this now for a couple of years, about program choice and making some hard decisions, and we will continue to make some recommendations moving forward. But this is, you know, Mr. Penn was true, these are things we deal with all the time, and we work with them and work around them, and I have complete confidence and faith in his abilities, in his team's ability to, to get us in the appropriate situation come June. But this is not a place that we want to keep visiting every January, where we're, we're looking at these, these big financial problems because of some of the ways that we, because of some of the things that we offer in the school, programs, allotments, et cetera, and when you start looking at that, it just tells the story. But this is an unsustainable model. If you continue, you cannot sustain this moving forward, and we need, we need to make sure that we make those hard choices this year, so we're not back in this situation again next year. It's also, it's too stressful for you, it's too stressful for us, it's just, it's just a, it's not a good model, and we need to make sure that we fix it once and for all this time going through, so that we're not here again next year.
Okay, Pam?
Thank you. The other, the human element, which I appreciate that you've done, is that you try to do it the right way, and, and pay people what they, what they, not the allotment part, the one before that, the salary study. So explain to me, because I'm trying to understand the numbers again. I remember during budget process, we went to the county and said, look, we did this study, and our people aren't being paid what they are qualified to do. And so, and they gave us money for that. We didn't get everything we asked for, but this was something that they did give, give to us, which I appreciate, because yes, our people are our most important economic cost. So, so explain the numbers. What, what were we given? What, what we, did we end up paying? And then, how do we sustain that? Because the whole point when you touch salaries is you don't do one-time funding, you do ongoing funding. So what is the commitment that we have from the county on this?
So based on the information that we had, at the time we went to the county, we requested $2.6 million, right? So we got confirmation of that funding, if I recall correctly, around the second week of June, right? As we began to implement the implications of the salary study and all the stuff that went in there, keep in mind a couple of things. Probably about a third of the list changed hands, right? Over the, over the course of the time the salary study was developed. People left, people came in, right? So that was the first thing we had to fix. Second thing is, as we started pulling back some of the data that came back to us, we found inequities in terms of people being placed in essentially the same role on two different salary schedules, right? So we fixed that. The biggest piece that we found is that for a long period of time, it's a couple of administrations ago, people were not being placed at the right level of experience on a salary scale, right? And it was endemic, right? There was a lot of that that went on. People were told to only put down your most recent job or your most recent two jobs, and didn't reflect frankly how long they had served in that particular role or had been in the workforce, right? So if you think about the change that we made, where we intentionally said, we're going to consider all the person's full-time work experience over the course of their career to make sure they're adequately placed, we then faced a dilemma. Now, we know we've got this passed in that we got to go address, right? Well, what do we do? Well, what do we do? We could ignore it, we could try to fix it, or we could prorate it. And the first proration and ignoring it were not an option, in my mind. But that's kind of what we uncovered, was that there was this long-term incorrect placement of people on the wrong scales or on the wrong grades.
That I understand. What, I'm just saying, moving forward, how do we sustain that?
So part two, yes.
Yeah.
So I think going forward, we're going to have to make some hard choices when it comes into budget season. You know, I've sort of foretold that to all my peer cabinet members, and Dr. Kavicki and I have had some conversations around that. If you're fully committed to paying people what they deserve, then you've got to make sure when it comes to, when you're looking at every other part of the budget, does this actually make sense? Is this a need or is it a want? Do we have it because it's been a matter of convenience or because we have a personal attachment to it or some other factor? I think we're going to have to make some very hard choices in this next budget cycle.
Dr. Kavicki?
Yeah, and just echo that. I don't want to make the impression that we're going to eliminate everything. We're not. But I think we want to make sure to look at data and evidence. What are our kids participating in? What has the highest rate of involvement? What is, what does the workforce look like in our county when we look at our workforce development and we talk with our Chamber of Commerce and our businesses? What are the needs? We want to make sure that we're adequately addressing them based on data and evidence that, again, to Mr. Penn's point, that we're making hard choices but the right choices, providing the opportunities for our kids, that they have the access and resource to participate in these different programs that are needed in the area, that are being driven by high participation rates, that are being driven by a lot of the data and the research that we do that are going to give us good high return on investment. Not just because, as Mr. Penn just said, "It's what I want." You know, is it a need or is it a want? And I think they're the things we have to continue to assess as we move forward.
Okay, Melanie?
I'm good.
Sam?
You answered my question about the job study. A few days ago, there was a lot of hubbub about grants being frozen. I'm not expecting an exhaustive list, but just can you just highlight a few areas that would have impacted us if those federal grants had been frozen?
I mean, the most, and let me just put it out there, because I did respond to this during email, and I was going to touch on it when we got to the federal funds piece a little bit later on. That directive was rescinded 36 hours after it was issued by OPM, Office of Policy Management, right, from the White House. That has now gone away. However, had that stayed in place, we would have had concerns around our ability to continue to operate under a number of the federal title programs. Those are the biggest impact. Title I, II, III, and IV, with Title I being the largest. And the IDEA grant, which supports our EC students, was another big piece that would have been impacted. And as a practical matter, it would have frozen the cash and our ability to pull that cash down. Now, what I will tell you is, we made a cash request last week, writing on the wall just to see if it went through, and of course, it got rescinded and we got the cash that we were expecting to receive when we put that through, right? Now, you can't go out there and say, "Give me the whole grant now." That they don't allow. But you've got to be able to demonstrate the level of cash you're pulling down. But as a practical matter, we would have run into cash constraints on being able to sustain all these things until that got fully resolved. So I was very happy to see that when in 36 hours it was pulled back.
Anybody else over there? Catherine?
I would just like to say thank you for all your details and your reports. Not only do you give us numbers, but you explain the numbers, and it certainly makes it easier for us to understand. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Great. Yeah, it just, it seems it's a lot, it's a big shortfall. I mean, it's something we're going to need to be really delving into the next couple of months here. Thank you very much for the report. Guess we're going to move on to Section 11, which is items for consent or action at our February 10 business meeting. And you've got the first item here, which is our 2024-25 Budget Amendment Number Four.
I will tell you that Number Five is going to look a lot different than this one, based on the last conversation, right? But let me take you through what's changed specifically in the level of funding that we've received and some of the things that we've trued up against that. This Budget Amendment Number Four reflects anything that was booked in the past month and affects Funds Number One, II, III, IV, and VIII, as you can see in the memo that went out. Fund Number One, we had an increase overall of $914,000, $220,000 of which was related to bonuses for third-grade teachers for reading achievement, and the rest were principles on several different performance factors. And what I will tell you is, the district has no involvement in the calculation of those bonuses. That's all set by DPI, Department of Public Instruction, based on criteria set by the state legislature. They give us the money. We basically serve as a conduit of receiving the cash and paying it out the way it's determined by the state. Local funds, we reallocated just $26,000 between expense lines. That's a pretty straightforward one. Federal Fund Three, and again, this is where I'm going to make the comment around, you know, the federal funds are not frozen at this point. We had a net increase of about $33,000 that reflected minor increases in our CTE, Career and Technical Education, and Title I, III, and IDA, right? But they were not big changes. Capital outlay, we had a minor adjustment from the state allotment for replacement school buses to the tune of just over $4,000. Special funds, Fund Eight, increase of about $187,000. This is the cost associated with the IADS Regional Consultant. This is a consultant that the state provides to help with EC-related consulting services. They have the person here. The person's technically on our payroll, but they actually give us the money to pay for the person and all the person's expenses as well. So again, we serve, in that case, as the conduit again. And then I'm happy to report that we did also receive a $42,000 technology grant from Eli Lilly for Wedding Hills Elementary School. That is teed up to be spent on 14 new Promethean boards, so it'll cover 14 classrooms at $3,000 apiece. Questions?
Questions from the board? Are we okay putting this on consent? Do we have enough information? Yes, consent? Okay. We'll add that one to our consent agenda for next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to 11.02, which is Restart Calendar Flexibility. And I think, who's filling in for Mr. Bowers? Miss Sarah Reeves? And a team here. Great.
Just a little bit of background information for you all. You may remember that we are actually in Cohort One of the restart model, allowing us additional flexibilities through the North Carolina Department of Instruction. They're going to share a little bit with you around our proposal for restart flexibilities today.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Walter, Vice Chair Mills, members of the board, Dr. Kavicki.
Dr. Wells, could you introduce yourself so the new board members know who you are?
Oh, yes. My name is Richie Wells. I'm the principal at WM Irvin Elementary School. Thank you. All right, so my colleagues and I are coming here today without our front man, Dr. Bowers. So I have the privilege of getting things kicked off. I may not match his exuberance or his eloquence. I believe my colleagues nominated me because I have the same haircut. But I do want to point out I have a little bit more hair than Dr. Bowers does. But we do want to thank you for your time and for your thoughtful consideration around our requests, around exercising restart flexibility at our school sites to positively change outcomes for students. So I want to start off by speaking to the questions some folks have. What is restart? And so, the next slide, please. All right. So the principals in our group here represent the five restart schools and Cabarrus County schools. And so our schools first received this designation in the 2016-17 school year due to being identified as recurring low-performing schools at that time. So schools are identified as low-performing schools based on their school performance grades and their growth status based on EVOs data. Schools are considered recurring low-performing schools if they're classified as continually low performing, so year after year. So the restart is a reform model offered through the state to allow certain schools to operate with charter-like flexibility. So this flexibility enables us to work with our board and with our district leaders to make local decisions around instructional programming, staffing options, budget options, and even calendaring options. And so that, all being said, with the end goal, that these schools that exercise these flexibilities meet or exceed expected growth, close gaps for students, and do that at an accelerated pace. And so our five restart schools, we've got four of them represented tonight. First of all, we have Concord Middle School. Dr. Johnson was not able to be here tonight. We have Rocky River Elementary School with Tara Butch, who's also the District Principal of the Year. I wasn't going to do that, but she asked me to. We also have Royal Oaks School of the Arts, represented by Ms. Melody Marsh, who is the only principal here who was actually the principal at Royal Oaks School of the Arts whenever it initially became a restart school. We have Mr. Bernard from Winkoff Elementary School. And then I'm Richie Wells, proudly representing WM Irvin Elementary School. And so moving on to why we're here tonight is to talk about restart moving forward. Okay? And so you can see, based on the restart reform model, there's five areas in which schools are eligible to exercise flexibility. And of those five areas, our schools exercise three of those. We work around budget flexibility, calendar flexibility, and employment and staffing flexibility. And so my colleagues are going to speak about each of those in a few moments. I am proud to report that while our pathways may have looked different, all of our restart schools did earn continued authorization based on the comparisons between the 22-23 data and the original data set from 2016-17. And so because of that, we are in our year one of the renewed five-year cycle. And we look to enjoy continued restart flexibility through the 28-29 school year. And I can speak for my colleagues when I say I'm truly excited by this work. We're not the kind of people to get comfortable and say, "Okay, it's good enough." We've got lots of work to do. We're working to close gaps for students and accelerate learning. I'm looking forward to continue to learn and create ways to leverage this flexibility as part of our equation to positively change outcomes for students. We thank you again for your time. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bernard from Winkoff Elementary School to talk about some of our recent outcomes and requests.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. And I just want to say it's an honor to be here before the board. Good evening. I'm the newest member of the cohort here of the restart schools, and so I want to thank my colleagues for sort of onboarding me as I've gone through this fall. I have the privilege of speaking to some of the data, the historic data here for the restart schools that we've demonstrated. And as you see on the slides, the overwhelming trend is that schools that are restart schools are moving in that positive direction. And I want to highlight some of the particular areas, even in areas where you might see red. There's some historic data that shows four of six years of met or exceeding growth, as measured by the EVOs there at Concord, as well as all four elementary schools last year meeting and exceeding. Dr. Wells' school, Irving, has far exceeded growth, which is a tremendous number, although the other three of us, I think, are all in agreeance that we're coming after him this year. Also, very proud to show that the subgroup data indicates that all schools at the elementary level have met all subgroups with the exception of two. So that's 20 of 22 subgroups have met or exceeded their data, which is a very exciting number to see. And then we also have that 100% of our flexibility outcomes have been met as designated. The flexibility outcomes are goals that we set unique to our school, the needs of our schools, the data of our school. And across the board, we're meeting those expectations. Thank you. And then we also are asking that we continue the two requests, the flexibilities of both employment, which allows us to put highly qualified candidates in a position even if they don't have that particular licensure. In truth, that one has started to mean a little bit less as more and more alternative licensing pathways have come into play, but it still gives us that opportunity to cut the time to put great people in front of our kids when that opportunity presents itself, as well as the budget flexibility that we like to have at our restart schools. Excuse me. Any questions about that? Thank you.
Good evening. Again, I just kind of want to piggyback off of what everyone has said, and thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it. I am here. My slides go into our collective request, which, again, is the calendar flexibility. And so what we are asking for the last two years, we have actually come with the request of requesting three additional early release days in the calendar for our staff to be able to spend some time working through some of the unique needs and areas in each of our schools. However, this year, we are only requesting one additional day in the calendar. And so in looking through the 25-26 calendar, the district has added some additional early release days. So with this one-day request, it would kind of level out in where we have been the last two years. So we are seeking one day. The date there is actually a Friday. I'm not sure how we missed that, but as I was reviewing, it is Friday, January the 23rd. And so what that means is the elementary schools would dismiss at 12:00, and then Concord Middle would dismiss at 1:00. And again, that afternoon would be used for each of our schools to spend some time with our staff and provide them with some professional learning that they may not have outside of that time. And so, there you go. And so this is just kind of a draft. Dr. Ward was kind enough to give us a draft model of what that would look like. And I can speak to, the last couple of years, we have shared this calendar with our families prior to the school year ending. It is also something that we have sent home once school has started and give those reminders as we get closer to those dates. And then the last slide that I have to share is, we, again, notifying families kind of prior to the end of the school year and then once school starts. And then we do work very closely. We have already reached out to the Boys and Girls Club, Kids Plus, Child Nutrition, and Cabarrus County Schools Transportation, just to kind of share that date with them to make sure that there were no, you know, for example, the Boys and Girls Club have Pancake Day in March, and so if we were to pick a day that didn't work for them. So we, a lot of our students do take advantage of that after-school opportunity. So did reach out to all of those entities to make sure that our date would work with them, and they had said that they did not see any issues with those dates. And we do choose a half-day as opposed to a full day, in part so that our kiddos can get breakfast and lunch, two hot meals, and then also just to kind of put eyes on kids and give kids that opportunity to be in our buildings in their safe space. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Marsh to close us out.
All right. And so what are we doing with this half-day? I'm sure you are wondering. So all of our professional development offerings on this half-day and these half-days that we have, they're all grounded in our school improvement plans and our goals and our action steps. And we really see this time as an opportunity to invest in our staff and really give them the tools that they need to excel at our respective schools. And so at Royal Oaks School of the Arts, all of our early release stays are spent on arts integration, professional development. That may be bringing in artists or professionals from outside of our school, or using our on-staff staff experts or leaders for arts training or collaboration time between our encore teachers and our core teachers, so we can create amazing lesson plans. So that has certainly been our focus. Some of the other schools have focused on school culture, spending time, relationship building, time management strategies, self-care, making sure we fill up our teachers so they don't burn out. Also, data digs and virtual teaming, where we analyze data to determine next steps and create action plans. Also, data-driven small groups, where we discuss and show and model how to best deliver differentiated instruction in math and reading small groups. And then we have some social-emotional learning and movement and other student engagement strategies and best practices. And then at our STEM schools, they have STEM immersion experiences where the staff have an opportunity to go out into the community at places such as the Metroline Greenhouse, and they learn how these places use STEM in their everyday environment, and the teachers bring that learning back to the school and use this to build project-based learning opportunities for students. So we do use these days wisely. We look forward to them, our staff look forward to them. After our professional development, we do survey our staff to see how they felt about the professional development, get their feedback, as we look forward to planning the upcoming restart dates. So our last slide, just want to, again, thank you so much for your support of the restart schools over the years. It does mean a lot, and it means a lot that you guys are out in our schools, walking our halls, looking at what we're doing in the classroom, and asking questions. I see you guys at our events at Royal Oaks, and I know you guys are also at the other restart schools. So we do appreciate that, and we're here to answer any questions you have about our requests.
Thank you for the presentation. Board members are on the side. Any questions? Sam?
I don't have a question, but I just want to thank them for, restart gives you some flexibility, but I just am encouraged each year of how creative you are. My only regret is that other schools can't take advantage of that flexibility, but that's not within our purview. But thank you for being intentional about taking advantage of those opportunities that you have.
Dr. Kavicki?
Yeah, I just want to commend the leadership that I see in front of me this evening. These are four- These are four representatives of the elementary quadrant that we have here in Cabarrus County, and reminding both our board and our community that all of our elementary schools met or exceeded growth this year, which is a tribute to your leadership and what you do on a day-to-day basis for our kids. I've had the pleasure of being in your buildings numerous times. I can tell everyone here tonight that these four men and women represent the leadership that I see on a daily basis in Cabarrus County. I'm very proud of them, and I'm very honored to be part of you, part of the group, as your colleague. You do a great job leading our schools, and I thank you for that.
I think the board echoes that. So on this side, Greg? Pam? Melanie?
I want to thank you, because a lot of people don't realize all the moving parts, if you ask for one thing, and how many people you had to talk to, to make sure that your request was even viable. So I appreciate the creativity and what all that goes into this. And yes, I wish that everybody had the flexibility, because it equates to doing what's best for the kids. That's the bottom line. So I thank you very much.
Okay, board members, are we okay with this consent? Or you want to actually consent on this side? Consent on that side? We will add it to our consent agenda. Thank you for your time. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 11.03, which is policies on first read. And we do have Dr. Sandy Ward with us. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. [laughter]
Oh, gosh. Good evening, board members. Dr. Kapicki, Mr. Snell, and welcome to you, Ms. Lancaster. I've known her for a long time, so welcome to the board. We do have some policies up for first read this evening. Get those out for you. All right, I have not received any questions, so I will dive right in. All right. So policy 1310-4002 is our parental involvement. I want to remind the board, this has come up numerous times since it passed. I guess it was last August. I think this is probably our third or fourth review. So this policy has been revised to address the new statutorily required career development plans for our students. So it added that phrase in there to capture that. Yeah, and this one is like 19 pages long. Okay? It also talks a little bit about our immunizations and things of that nature, had some minor required changes, and it was recommended to update the legal references. No questions?
Board members, any questions on this policy?
Okay.
We're good. Next.
All right. Policy 3227-7322 is webpage development. And this really speaks to the Title II of the ADA, which requires school systems to make web content and apps accessible, per the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines. And this needs to be done by 2027. And I'm sure we are probably well ahead of the game. If you have any questions on web accessibility of our web pages.
Any questions? Pam?
Well, Mr. Sand is going to go through all the trouble coming up, but I want to give him a reason to. If you can just explain, if the deadline's 2027, where are we at in the process?
Sure. So my team is working with Phil First Team and Communications on updating all of our websites right now. This is not a process that makes a lot of sense to do over the summer. So we're working with our instructional technology facilitators to update each of our public-facing websites. For the most part, our current platform and software requires WCAG compliance. The problem is whenever a school-based personnel, for instance, puts up a flyer that is an image that may not be compliant. So for instance, if you're unaware, Web Content Accessibility Guidelines means that anything that's on that screen needs to be read by a screen reader, for instance. So if it's an image, it may not necessarily be read by a screen reader. So what we're doing is going through and making sure that our staff understand how to promote Web Content Accessibility Guidelines and then clean up websites. The idea is to have this done, you know, well before the 2026 guidelines.
And then to follow up that, PDFs are not good. But I'm thinking about our calendar, because our website right now has it in multiple forms. So if you have it in multiple forms, is that like, yes, we've got it?
So, that's a great question. Yes, Phil's saying yes. As long as it's accessible in one of those forms.
We have plain text.
Yeah.
Right.
So plain text calendar.
Right, that's what I was going to say. It is a PDF. It is plain text.
That's right.
It is, there's multiple versions of it.
The text beside it says text format, so that a user will be able to click on that link, know what they're clicking on, and be able to access it in that format.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on this one? Okay. This next one has some revisions.
Yes. The next one is policy 8510, School Finance Officers and the Duties There. This should have come up a while ago, and I kind of erroneously left it off the agenda last time, so I will let Mr. Penn explain his.
Sure. So now, most of these revisions actually did come from the Policy Service. There were a couple of tweaks that I made, and one of them is actually in that first paragraph. There's actually a carve-out within the requirements that if you're only serving as an interim basis in a school district, you don't have to have the designation to be certified as a finance officer. But for the district's protection, and I was thinking about this, well, why wouldn't you want to have somebody who at least could apply and get the benefit of it, right? Like I did. It was a year later that they told me I was approved, but they, it went to the board, and I had actually applied for it within my date of hire, within 30 days, right? So I think that's an important protection for the district. Now, most of the other things that are in here, as I said, come from the Policy Service, except some of the things on reporting. So if we scroll down a little bit, one of the changes I did make is when we talk about our ongoing district finances, like I just did, and when I provide reports that are forwarded to the superintendent, what was originally written in there, and I think it's a little further down, it talks about, at least on a quarterly basis or something like that, but we're actually doing that monthly. And you'll see that actually where the changes got made in Number 12, as an example, right? And then everything else kind of follows along with most of what the policy was. So the only changes that I made outside of the Policy Service is when what we were doing exceeded what was in the proposed policy. Okay?
Questions from board members? Looks like we're okay with that. Thank you.
All right. Cool.
The next two are just technical edits?
Yep, we have two technical edits. The first one being 6430, purchasing requirements for equipment, materials, and supplies. We were able to do a tech edit on that one. I believe it was in the legal, yep, legal references. Any questions on that? And the last technical edit for this first-read set is 7650, Employee Travel and Other Expense Reimbursement. And it also had an edit in the references, the legal references. So those are required.
Okay, board members, these are our first-read policies. Do we want those on consent, or do we want them on, any of them on consent over on this side? Consent? Okay, those will all be added to our consent agenda. Thank you. And stick around, because we have our policies on approval for second read.
All right. So last month, we reviewed several policies. Again, I did not receive any questions. Shall I go through them?
I think just for the new people, maybe?
Sure, absolutely. 8305 is the Federal Grant Administration, and the language was revised to conform with changes, Uniform Guidance, which establishes standards for financial and program management. Any questions? All right. 9125, Participation by Minority-Owned Businesses. It revised the definition of minority businesses to reflect the change to the state law definition, which was required. And I believe we had a question for Mr. Mills that was answered by Mr. Penn. That was the old question. Just making sure. It was old. Pass that. Okay. Policy 3225-4312-7320, Technology Responsible Use. There were adjustments made to this policy in response to the new state law prohibiting viewing pornography on government resources and government networks and devices. We really needed that one. Okay. All right. The next one is 4150, School Assignment, Transfers, and Program Choice. This was a district request that protected our teachers who were either moved to new places or moved to other schools, that their students can remain in their program choice without having to move with their parent. So that was a great thing for our board. Did we do 2110 last week? Or did we pull those last month?
Is that a question for William?
Yeah.
William?
Did we pull 2110 and 2115? Or did we actually go through with those?
I don't think so. I don't know. I don't recall. I have to check.
All right, you check.
Yeah. Okay, while they're checking. 6200, Goals of School Nutrition was a legal reference update, and 6450, Purchases of Service was also a legal reference required update.
Okay, for Shannon's benefit, when they're on second read, they're effective when we vote on them, which will be next week. When they're first read, it tells the public that we intend to make changes to the policies. The public has 30 days to, or essentially a month to read the policy and give us some feedbacks.
And Ms. Rar reports that we did go through with 2110, Board Member Elections. We heard that one, which was a district request, and 2115, Unexpired Term Fulfillment. So we also did pass that one through.
Okay, board members, are we okay with consent for these second reads as well? Yes? All right, looks like those will all also be added to our consent agenda. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we will next welcome up Mr. Brian Cohn on 11.05, Agency and Lease Agreements for Culture and Web, Mary Frances Wall, and Opportunity School Projects.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Kapicki. So Cabarrus County Schools in Cabarrus County are required to enter into these lease and agency agreements for properties that involve debt financing. These are standard agreements that outline the responsibilities of each party during the period that the properties are owned by Cabarrus County but operated by Cabarrus County Schools. Attached to your agenda item are the documents included as a part of these agreements for Culture and Web STEM School, Opportunity School, and Mary Frances Wall. These agreements have been reviewed by both the county attorney and the school district's attorneys. These agreements were presented and approved by the Board of Commissioners at their January meeting and are requiring your approval as well.
Okay, board members, do we have any questions on, if we have time to review these? If there's no questions, do we want to put this on consent, or do we want this on consent on this side? On this side? Consent? All right, so we will move that to your consent agenda as well.
Okay.
And stick around, because you've got the next one as well, which is our 11.06, Sewer Easement Request, JM Robinson High School Property.
So Morris Industrial Limited Liability Corporation has requested a whopping seven-square-foot easement on the JM Robinson High School property to accommodate a sanitary sewer connection into the public system. This request has been presented and approved by Cabarrus County and is being presented to this board for approval as well. Typically, properties that still are under the county's name don't come before this board for approval, just more informative, but because of the way the agenda item was written at the county level, it did say that this board was going to make that recommendation as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about it, but it's seven square feet is a very, very small amount. Probably won't even actually touch the seven square feet.
Questions from board members? Ms. Mills?
Just one quick question. So that, this sounds ridiculous, but that seven-square-foot of property where that sewer line is running through, I know we have some problems with water sewer lines in Northwest Cabarrus. 50, 40 years from now is a failure, and that seven-foot, square-foot area going to be our responsibility to fix?
No, so the line is, the line isn't in the easement. The easement is a part of what the city of Concord is required as a part of their maintenance for it, because it's a public line on the Morris Development side. So that's, and it just runs over onto our, again, a little triangular corner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Are we good with consent for this one? Yes, consent on that side, too? All right, we'll add that one to our consent agenda as well. And next year's still up, so we got, next is 11.07, which is the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, Balance of Construction for the Opportunity School Project.
Yes, so the Department of Construction, in collaboration with our construction manager at Risk, New Atlantic Construction, held the bid openings for the construction bid packages that are part of the new Opportunity School Project on Wednesday, January the 15th, and on the advertised rebid date of January the 22nd. All these bids were publicly open and read to those in attendance. A total of 77 bids were received across the 23 different bid packages during this bid phase, averaging to about 3.4 bids per package. Tonight, we are requesting the approval of the A133-2019 GMP Amendment for the balance of construction for the new Opportunity School Project in the amount of $8,500,528. It's worth noting that the total project GMP does remain still within the approved funds allocated by Cabarrus County and the LGC. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions from board members? On this side? Nope. On this side? Moving right along then. Are we okay with consent?
Yes.
Yes? All right, that'll be added to the consent agenda as well. So next one, we have 11.08, which is the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment III, Balance of Construction for Mary Frances Wall Pre-K Center Project.
So again, the Department of Construction, in collaboration with our CM at Risk, GW Lyles Construction Company, held the bid openings for the remaining balance of construction bid packages on Thursday, January the 16th, as well as the re-advertised date on Monday, January the 20th. All these bids as well were publicly open and read aloud to those that were in attendance. We received a total of 63 different bids, spanned across the 28 different packages for all three GMPs that were presented. Tonight, we are requesting your approval of the A133-2019 GMP Amendment for the balance of construction for the Mary Frances Wall Pre-K Center Project in the amount of $10,553,131. To summarize, this amendment added to the two previous amendments approved by this board in August and December of '24. The total guaranteed maximum price for the construction and development of this site is in the amount of $11,533,270. Again, this total project GMP does remain within the approved funds allocated by Cabarrus County and the LGC. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, on this side, any questions on this side? Nope. On this side, questions? Guess you've explained it very well for us. So shall we add it to consent? Yes? Consent on this side? Consent here? All right, that one will also be added to our consent agenda for next week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. C. All right, so we're moving right along, just a few left. Now we have 11.09, right, which is the Bethel Elementary School Flooring Replacement Project, and we have Mr. Chuck Taylor at the podium. Welcome.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Kapicki, it's my pleasure to bring the exciting flooring project for Bethel Elementary School to you. It will further help us reduce our maintenance and improve our efficiency. It was approved by the board as a project in 23-24. It was funded by the county in that year. We bid it out, followed all the state statutes, regulations, board guidelines, and if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Taylor on this one? We have a quiet group tonight, okay?
It is always exciting to see a job come in $100,000 under the estimate. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we want to add this one to our consent agenda? We have consent on this side? Consent on that side? That'll also be added to our consent agenda. And I think our last one is also you. So we have 11.10, Public Safety Academy Renovation Project.
Yes, sir. Well, back in fiscal year '23, we were funded for the Public Safety Academy at Concord. And I know I've spoken to the board about this several times over the last few years. That happened to be at the time when we were having issues with pricing skyrocketing. So we worked with the county, decided to wait a little bit to try to get better pricing. We did, but it still came in high. We ended up with a low bid of $1,853,000. We have successfully negotiated that down to $1,211,055 and some odd cents. I'm asking the board tonight to give approval so that we can move forward. This is very key right now to get this This is very key right now to get this metals package in. There's a four-month lead time on it. If we wait any longer, I won't be able to get the training tower itself up before school starts. So this does have a serious impact on next year's school year.
We do have a question, Pam?
So you're asking for us to make a motion tonight to approve it?
Not tonight.
Okay, just to get it on...
Yeah, we can wait till the next one, but if we miss this window, because it's four weeks out, we could possibly face another price increase as well as an extension of lead time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Thank you all for explaining these projects to our understanding. I did fail to mention in the introductions here that our SRO, Matt is Dylan Matthews.
That is, I'm sorry. Charles Boebert, thank you for being here, I appreciate you. So board members, we do have a need to go into closed session again, and I guess we will brief that. I'll need a motion in a second. So a motion in a second for board convening closed session to consult with attorneys and privilege, preserve the attorney-client privilege of the General Statute 143318, 11A3, including the cases involving Hunter Hoskins, Leonis, Catherine Gillings, and A.O., can consider confidential personal matters pursuant to the General Statute 143318, 11A6. Do I have that motion? Mr. Trenway, do I have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye. Okay, we will convene a closed session. We'll say goodnight to our audience.